If you're married to a, if you've got your dental degree in New York and you're married to a serviceman.
Well, good morning. Members will please come into the chamber and please take your seats. Members, please come take your seats. Well, good morning, members. Good morning, we have a little work to get done today. Get done today. Well, the hour for convening having arrived, all members will please take their seats. Mr. Clerk, how about ringing that bell, please, sir? We're going to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber. And Mr. Clerk, will you unlock the machines? Have all members voted? Have all members signed in here and to signify your attendance? I think you have. All members, I see maybe a straggler coming in there, let's see if he can get... Have you already, I see he's up there already. Oh yeah, you were prompted on time. We'll lock the machine in just a second. I think we're good to go, so... All members are certainly clocked, are signed in, so... Mr. Clerk, will you lock the machines? Doorkeepers, I think we're ready, please close the doors and keep them closed. As is our custom, we will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. This morning, I have the great honor to introduce our chaplain of the day. Before I directly introduce him, I want to tell you a little bit about him. It is truly a privilege and an honor, I think, for us to have a distinguished man of the cloth here today as our chaplain. Our chaplain is Pastor Choi. Now, I'll tell you a bit more about Pastor Choi and why y'all should recognize that name, but I'm gonna give you a minute to do that. But I want to tell you a little bit about the background of Pastor Choi. And I don't like reading a lot about the background of folks, but this one is very impressive. So let me tell you about Pastor Choi from the Sugarloaf Korean Baptist Church. Pastor Choi earned his PhD from Temple University in Philadelphia, Master of Theology from Princeton Theological Seminary, and a Master of Arts and a Master of Divinity from the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary in Lewis... Louisville, Kentucky. Pastor Choi serves the largest Korean Southern Baptist church in the southeastern United States, offering three services, maybe more than that now, I think more than three a day, every Sunday. And I recently learned, as we prepared for today, that Pastor Choi visits Korea every year and preaches, spends time with their version of the American Billy Graham, Billy Kim, who...
Ninety...
Ninety years old, very impressive pastor and spiritual leader in South Korea. Now, Pastor Choi would not be the man he is or be the success he is without his wife Tina. So Tina, if you will, stand a little and see whom you are and let's welcome Tina here to this... This people's house, Tina, thank you. Now, in due observance of our custom, Representative Kennard represents the district that Sugarloaf Baptist Church is in. So thank you for allowing me to do this, Representative Kennard, I appreciate that. The other thing, let's see if y'all got this part, if you've got the connection. So, one of the finest members of the Georgia State Patrol is on the executive detail that takes care of Dale and myself, and that y'all see him around, is Corporal Chris Choi. Corporal Choi, would you stand as well? And those of you who have had the honor to communicate and know Corporal Choi will understand the quality of people his parents are, because they've raised a fine, fine man, and we appreciate him every day and thank him for the work he does for the citizens of this state on our behalf to keep us safe. And especially from my family, thank you Corporal Choi. Pastor, you've got a lot to live up to here, brother. Tina told me she wrote everything down just right for you, so let's see how you do. Now, it's my great honor to introduce our chaplain of the day, Pastor Choi.
Good morning. 안녕하세요, 반갑습니다. It's good to see you. Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Burns, and members of Georgia House of Representatives, it is my pleasure and great honor to share the good news of Jesus Christ this morning with you and pray for you. This morning's text is from John's Gospel, Chapter 21, verses 11-12. This morning's text is from John's Gospel, Chapter 21, verses 15 to 18. It reads, "When they had finished eating, Jesus said to Simon Peter, 'Simon, son of John, do you truly love me more than this?' 'Yes, Lord,' he said, 'you know that I love you.' Jesus said, 'Feed my lambs.' Again Jesus said, 'Simon, son of John, do you truly love me?' He answered, 'Yes, Lord, you know that I love you.' Jesus said, 'Take care of my sheep.' The third time he said to him, 'Simon, son of John, do you love me,' Peter was hurt because Jesus asked him the third time, 'Do you love me?' He said, 'Lord, you know all things, you know that I love you.' Jesus said, 'Feed my sheep.' And this morning, I'd like to talk about checkpoints briefly. Checkpoints, points of checking who you are and where you are. And that is what checkpoints are for, and the story of our text today could serve as checkpoints for us, servants of the Lord and servants of the citizens of the great state of Georgia. The first checkpoint, remember your call. Remember your call. Each time Jesus hears Peter saying, 'Yes, Lord, you know that I love you,' he tells Peter, 'Feed my sheep.' To me, it is a tremendous way of telling Peter to stick with the original plan, that is Peter's call to become a fisher of men. By saying, 'Feed my lambs,' Jesus wants Peter to remember his call in spite of his shortcomings. Likewise, we need to remember our call when things go well as much as when things do not go well. Sometimes we may have to walk through the valley of the shadow of death. Sometimes we may falter during moments that we never imagined we would ever encounter. Have you wished that our life would be just like a computer so that we could delete or reboot every time we feel like it? But in the moments like those, we need to remember our call. The call Jesus gave us for the kingdom, the people of Georgia. Second checkpoint, focus on what matters the most to the Lord. Have you wondered what you would have said if you were Jesus early in the morning besides the sea of Tiberias? I know what I would. It definitely would not be the same as that of Jesus. And have you ever wondered why Jesus asked what he asked Peter? Jesus could have asked about many other issues in a very different tone, but he did not. Instead, he just says, 'Simon, son of John, do you truly love me more than this?' Why do you think he did this? I truly believe he did it because he really matters... what really matters to him is Peter's love for Jesus. And it tells me that to Jesus, love matters the most. And it also tells me that love should be the only reason for doing what we do. So let us focus on what matters the most to the Lord. Let's love God and love our neighbors. The final and third checkpoint, stop making comparisons with each other. Our text shows us that right after being reassured of calling and love, Peter falls into the trap that destroys the lives of many faithful followers and leaders of Christ. This trap is called comparison. We, the followers of Christ, easily get tempted to make comparisons with others. And in the middle of this lies our desire to be boastful. We don't focus on how good and gracious the Lord is to us, but we focus on how much better we are than other people. And look at Peter. He turns around and sees John and immediately asks Jesus, 'Lord, what about him?' It's amazing how quickly we could make a bad turn in our lives like that. And it usually ends up with this famous saying, 'What about him? What about them?' Or even, 'Why me? Why not them?' Once we fall into the trap of making comparisons, normally one of two things happens. We either become boastful or resentful. We either become proud of ourselves or bitter toward somebody else. And neither is healthy as followers and leaders of Christ. And that's why I believe Jesus says, 'If I wanted to remain alive until I return, what is that to you?' So let us stop making comparisons with others at once. Rather, let us be grateful for what God has done for us. And the most powerful weapon to defeat the temptation to compare is to be grateful for what the Lord has given us and love one another. Our church located in Suwannee serves food boxes to more than 200 families on a weekly basis from all cultures and ethnicities, including the soup kitchen in downtown here at Atlanta. And at this point, I'd like to close with this. On behalf of Korean Americans here in Georgia and all over the world, I'd like to thank you for what Americans did for Koreans in the Korean War. About 130,000 Georgians were sent to Korea during the war from 1950 to 1953. They were somebody's sons, brothers, fathers, uncles, all loved ones. In total, 757 from Georgia never returned home from Korea, including 161 POWs and MIS who still remain unaccounted for. And just imagine what would have been the trajectory and the quality of our lives of our two sons and all Koreans today. Of course, no K-pop, no K-drama, no Korean-Americans here in Georgia. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. In the midst of our busy schedule, let us remember our calls. Focus on what matters the most to our Lord and stop making comparisons with each other, but learn to be grateful with and for each other. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for these men and women who are passionate about serving the community and fellow citizens here in Georgia. Father, bless their families and the families they serve. Continue to give them wisdom and strength so that their sphere of influence will have a greater impact on all the citizens in this wonderful state of Georgia and nation. Most of all, Father, help us to love one another and care for those who are hurting, weeping, and hopeless. And we pray this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Now, please join me in the praise and allegiance.
I praise the United States of America and to the Constitution of this state, one nation of our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Pastor Choi, you delivered it just like she wrote it. Excellent. Thank you for reminding us of those checkpoints in our lives. These members, we all know we are truly blessed to represent the folks of this state. So thank you again, and we appreciate having you here. Members, doorkeepers, you can unlock the doors. Members, you can join Pastor Choi in the South Any Room to meet him and have a photo if you'd like. Thank you. Okay, members, our doctor of the day resides in Representative Chairman Bill Yurder's district down in Sylvester. Dr. Kushtesai, good old South Georgia name, is here taking care of us today, so I would invite you all and would ask of you to go by and thank Dr. Desai for being here and taking care of us down at the medical station on the second floor. Chair now recognizes Chairman Tarvin, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits. Chairman Tarvin.
Mr. Speaker, your committee on information and audits has read the journal from the previous legislative day and found it to be correct.
Chairman Tarvin, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to dispense with the reading of the journal? Chair hears none. The reading of the journal is dispensed with. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the journal? Chair hears none, and the journal is confirmed. Mr. Clerk, will you read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day?
Representative Strachan to the 104th moves the filing be established as the order of business in the first part of the period unanimous consents. Reports of standing committees, third reading and passage of uncontested local bills and resolutions, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. I see we have no first readers, Mr. Clerk, is that correct? We have no second readers, Mr. Clerk, is that correct? But we have some reports of standing committees. The clerk will read.
Representative Beth Campbell, 135th District Chairman and Committee on Intergovernmental Coordination and Locals submitted the following report. Mr. Speaker, your committee on Intergovernmental Coordination and Locals had under consideration the following bill of the Senate, as instructed me to report saying back to the House, the following recommendation, Senate Bill 5EX, do pass. Respectfully submitted, Representative Beth Campbell, 135th District Chairman. That completes the reading of the reports of standing committees.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Third reading and passage of uncontested local bills. Well, I think we don't have to vote on it as a whole, because it is the whole. Is there any objection? No, we don't have to object to that. We don't have to take that up because there's only one bill. The clerk will read the caption to the local calendar.
Senate Bill 5EX by Senator Carden Summers of 13th, Turner County.
Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered on the local calendar? For what purposes, Representative Cannon rise?
Just a parliamentary inquiry.
A state inquiry.
Is it not true that there are many members in this body who are concerned that this might be the beginning of a piecemeal effort on district attorneys across Georgia?
A piecemeal effort on district attorneys across Georgia? I believe I read this was established in a state court. No, ma'am, I don't think that's what this does. This creates a state court in Turner County is what this does. Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered on the local calendar? Chair hears none, the previous question is ordered. Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee which was favorable to the passage of the bill? Chair hears none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Shall this bill now pass? All those in favor of the passage of the bill on the local calendar will vote yes, that's green, and all those opposed will vote no, that's red, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Not quite, we're okay, take your time. We have to... I have to be home by dark, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I'm good to go. How about you, Mr. Clerk? Have all members voted? All members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines on the passage of the bill on the local calendar. The yays are a 157, the nays are zero. This bill, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore passed. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. Members, if I can have your attention just for a moment. Before we move on to the rules calendar, this is a day that's pretty special in the history of our country and of this world. So, we're, I'm going to deviate just a little bit from morning, from afternoon orders. I'm going to allow two morning orders this morning, because it's a special day and because we have a special remembrance of one of our former members as well. But first, I want to tell you about a great day yesterday. It was a special day here at the Capitol. And if you missed it, you missed a good, a really good day, that some really good things were talked about. The Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities hosted their inaugural Flame of Hope Awards. It's going to happen again next year, because there's lots of flames of hope out there in our world. Our own former member, Commissioner Kevin Tanner, recognized recipients from every corner of our state, including one from my very own district, a young lady that I've seen and observed over the years grow up. Now, Ms. Ella Marchese, as I like to say, Marchese, Ms. Ella Marchese, was recognized as the recipient of the Flame of Hope Award. She's a special assistance, and there she is. Beautiful in body, but even more beautiful in heart and soul. So, we and her parents, Joe Marchese and from down in Springfield, and Molly Keight, Molly Keight Marchese, I'm sorry, save your moment, have helped Ella. She didn't mean much help. I'm going to tell you what, Ella is special. Ella has Down Syndrome, and she was awarded as a self-advocate, as a beacon of inspiration she has been to me for both those with disabilities and those without, that anything in this life that we know is possible through hard work and determination. That's the definition of it right there, y'all. She's going to be back up here when we go in session, and I hope you all get to meet Ella. Now, Commissioner Tanner also recognized a member of this body, a member of our body. Representative Hutchinson, will you stand? She was recognized, let me tell you first what she did. She was recognized as a champion of hope recipient for her commitment to furthering DBHDD's missions and values. Thank you, Representative, you're special. Congratulations to a member and two beautiful ladies. Thank you for your work, and we certainly appreciate you and what you are doing and what you will do. Thank you. At this time then, we're going to move on to these special morning orders. I'm going to recognize Florida Wade and Chairman Hitchens to come down and speak to us just for a minute or two. Gentlemen, Representative Wade, Chairman Hitchens, who served this country in the United States Marine Corps and the U.S. Coast Guard, and served in Vietnam. Gentlemen, you have the floor. Please give them your attention.
If everybody could remain seated for just a moment. First, I just want to thank the Speaker and for all those that allow us to do what we do, and especially today. Today is a special day, but it's also a day of somber remembrance. The words, "A day that will live in infamy." Eighty-two years ago, 2,403 people lost their life on an attack on our nation. 1,178 were injured, over 160 planes were destroyed, and it changed our history, our nation, and our world. And I'd like to give a special thank you to all those that have served in the armed forces, that have served in the National Guard, and those that are still serving in the reserves today that are in this body. The gentleman to my left is somebody that I look up to. The gentleman that we heard about, Mr. Kevin Tanner, told me, he said, "You're going to learn a lot of things from a lot of great people, but if you want to see somebody that has the epitome of service for their entire life," he said, "you need to seek out Colonel Hitchens." And it was an honor for me to meet him and to serve with him now. And I think you owe Kevin some money for that, I would assume.
I sent him some money before.
I know you have. But in all seriousness, for me, it's also a special day, because I learned, this was the first historical event I ever learned about as a young man, because it's my late father's birthday. He was born on this day in 1947. And it's a special day as well, because it changed the shape of why I'm here today. My late grandfather served in the Army Air Corps, was 25-years-old on this day, and made a decision instead of retiring, that he would continue a life of service that would take him to almost 11 other Air Force bases in the United States, having him retire at Warner Robbins, where my mother, his daughter, met my dad. And I just think the shape of history and the arc of time, that events like this, I know every person in this room has been impacted, and I think we can never forget. And I believe, from what I understand from our Chief of Staff, our former colleague, Chairman England, he said that we've never been in session on this day, and I just think it's important for us to recognize it. And with that, as a person who did not serve in the military, but has an utmost respect for those that do, I'd like to turn it over to Colonel Hitchens to share a few items that I think will be important for you to hear. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Speaker.
Well, the truth of the matter is, I found out I was going to speak about three minutes ago when I stepped up here. He asked me if I would come stand with him, but, and, you know, to serve in the military to me has been quite an honor. My family has a legacy of serving in the military. I have a distant relative who graduated from West Point, like our good friend over here that won the Special Lexon last year in 1880, and actually became a general and was an Indian fighter. I've had two uncles and a cousin graduate from Naval Academy. My Uncle Walter graduated in 1931, was a Lieutenant Commander in the XO of a destroyer during World War II, and lost an eye in a battle with the Japanese off the Aleutian Islands. His career was, was short-ended in that he couldn't go to sea again without an eye, and he always thought it kept him from making Admiral, but he served in the Pentagon as the Chief of Officer Programs. His brother graduated three years later and went to Naval, went into the supply section, but his son graduated in the late 50s, and he was a fighter pilot, peacetime, took off on a training mission from an aircraft carrier and never returned. Nobody ever knows what happened to him. We didn't have GPS then, they used Liran, but it wouldn't pinpoint with any accuracy where he was or what happened. On my father's side, his oldest brother, another Walter, was in the 82nd Airborne. He jumped into D-Day, into Normandy the day before D-Day, and survived, but later at a bridge too far, he jumped in and got caught in a tree. The Germans came by and shot him, and he got hit in the arm. It went up his arm and around his back, and resided for the rest of his life in his, in close proximity to his rib. For the rest of his life, his arm was just floated around. He had to carry it. And, but my, my father's twin brother, Jack, was in the Army Air Corps. Plane got shot down. He was missing in action for about 30 days, and the French Resistance picked him up, and he was able to make his way back to the American lines. And I always say he would be proud today to know that his grandson graduated from the U.S. Air Force Academy. I married a girl while he was there, and he's still in the Air Force Reserve, but he's a pilot for Delta here in Atlanta. And my father served in the Marine Corps in the Pacific. It was at Iwo Jima. He didn't get, he didn't get a Purple Heart, but he jumped across the ravine and tore his knees up and was retired medically from the military. But my legacy is not, is not near that. I appreciate all the people that think it's so, and I certainly, although some people think that I wasn't around for World War II, I was born two years afterwards, but, my good friend who's also a Vietnam veteran, Al Williams, I think was around, but, but I appreciate you taking time. There are a lot of people who, who lost their lives on that day, significant numbers of people. I've, you know, I was the Homeland Security Director back when they were building the World War II Memorial up in Washington, and I was in and out of there on a pretty regular basis, and I got to watch it and, and see it completed. And for those of you who've never been there, it's, it's one of the most emotional memorials that I've ever seen. And I go to Arlington, my father and two of my uncles are buried in Arlington, so I go up there fairly regularly. But I'm proud of the history of my family, those people who've stood for freedom, justice, and, you know, it's not an easy decision sometimes. I've often wondered, and I've talked to my father about it, you know, in one of those Higgins boats, about storm ashore at Iwo Jima, when you've got 20,000 Japanese there who, who are all embedded, they're in tunnels, and all they want to do is kill you. I mean, he went in, 4th and 5th Marine Division went in the first day, and three days later to 3rd Marine Division, the reserves had to be called in because it was such a bitter fight. But I appreciate you recognizing Pearl Harbor Day and the veterans who stood for us throughout our entire history of our country. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
And at this time, I would like to also just note, on that day, there were 14 Georgians that lost their life. So, if we could have just a brief moment of silence to reflect on this day and their lives and their families. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Chairman Hitchens, for that remembrance, so personally, you and your family, and thank you for your service to our country. Chairman Chokus is recognized for a morning order, and I'll remind everyone who signed up for morning orders, and after, we will have afternoon orders at the proper time. This is a special time for us. So, we will now recognize Chairman Chokus.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sunday, December 7, 1941, as you heard earlier, a day that will go down in infamy. As President Franklin Roosevelt so eloquently stated, it is declaration of war to Congress after the surprise attack on the U.S. Pacific Fleet anchored in Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, which was the beginning of the United States' direct involvement in the Second World War. The Axis Powers of Hitler's Germany and its unholy alliance with Imperial Japan brought this country and the world to war. On that day began a four-year struggle by the United States and the Allied Forces of Europe and the world to defeat tyranny, free the occupied countries of Europe and the Pacific, and bring freedom, democracy, and peace back to the world. At that time, it was not a sure thing for Allied Forces to be victorious. Hitler's Nazi Germany and Emperor Hirohito's Japan had conquered many countries by then and taken over their industries to strengthen their war machine. Hitler's U-boats hunted Liberty ships in the North Atlantic in wolf packs. Imperial Japan conquered many island nations in the Pacific. And Hitler's SS imprisoned and slaughtered Jews, gypsies, and many other peoples because of Hitler's deranged belief in a German superior Aryan race. I and many of you are fortunate to have served with Chairman John Yates, the last World War II veteran to serve in the Georgia House of Representatives. Captain Yates was a spotter for U.S. artillery. He flew a Piper Cub, which is a canvas-covered small airplane that offered no protection from enemy fire. He even was decorated for destroying an enemy tank by dropping a bomb out of the window and hitting it. He and I shared many stories about his activities during the Second World War and my interest. My father, Arthur Chokus, like so many young men and women at the time, volunteered upon graduation from high school to serve in the U.S. Army Air Corps. He was a right-waist gunner on a B-17, the Flying Fortress. He served in the 98th Air Force, 487th Bomb Group, and he was stationed in Levingham, England, and dropped many a bomb on Hitler's Nazi Germany. My mother, Anna Chokus, was a civilian working at Fort McPherson for the War Department here in Atlanta. And they were typical of the men and women at that time that rose to the occasion, as did the leaders of our Allied Forces. Franklin Roosevelt stated that unconditional surrender was our objective. Winston Churchill so eloquently stated, when talking about the RAF, Royal Air Force, said, "Never had so many owed so much to so few," describing the high losses of the Royal Air Force fighter pilots in the Battle of, Air Battle of Britain. General Eisenhower became the supreme commander of the Allied Forces in Europe and later became president. We had brilliant generals like George Patton, old blood and guts. And also, Britain had General Montgomery, and of course, General Douglas MacArthur, who famously stated when he left the Philippines, "I shall return." Like many of you, your fathers and grandfathers, uncles and aunts, served this country during the most trying times in history. I would be remiss if I did not mention Leader Estration's grandfather, who served in the U.S. First Army, the Big Red One. Please join me for a moment of silence to recognize the sacrifice of our fathers and grandfathers on behalf of freedom and democracy. As Tom Brokaw said, "They were the greatest generation." Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Representative Chokus. Thank you, members, for your attention. And I'll just make one quick add. If you have not been to the Arizona Memorial, it is one of the most awe-inspiring places I've ever been. As you see those bubbles of oil come rise to the service, if that doesn't get to you, nothing will. The sacrifices have been made for us, and for us to be here today and have the freedom to do what we've done the last few days, to freely debate our future. So, thank you to all of those who served us, especially to those who did not return. And I want to thank you, members, for your sacrifices to be away from your families, to be here on this time of year, and what you're doing to serve the people of Georgia. So, with that, Mr. Clerk, I think we're ready to move on to the rules calendar. Will you read the caption to SB 3 EX?
SB 3 EX by Senator Echols, the 49th, Kennedy the 18th, Gooch the 51st, Robertson the 29th, Brass the 28th, and others, to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts, to provide for a short title, and to provide for the contingent nature of this act and the circumstances under which it shall or shall not apply. This bill having referred to the Committee on Reaportment and Redistricting, that committee recommends that this bill do pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In the wisdom of the Committee on Rules, we have limited debate debate on the, on SB 3X to, let's see, two hours. And we will allocate that time after the Chairman's time to an hour for those that are in favor, and an hour for those folks who are opposed. And then we will also have a Minority Report, and we will conclude with the Chairman's time. That's what we'll do this morning. So, Mr. Chairman, the Chairman of the Committee from which SB 3X came to us, from Chairman Leverett, is recognized to present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, good morning. I'm here again to present to you another bill. This time, for your consideration, I am presenting Senate Bill 3 EX, which, if passed, will adopt a new set of electoral districts for the purpose of electoring our Georgia congressional representatives. And that proposed map that would be enacted by Senate Bill 3X is up on the screen. I'm assuming we're still having trouble with the drop-down screens, so we're putting it up there.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, so we'll just have them on the screens.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So the same history I related to you during our discussion of the House Bill 1 EX and Senate Bill 1 EX is also relevant to this bill. However, I respect you've heard it two times before, so I'll just review it very briefly here to put the rest of my discussion in context. On October 26, 2023, Judge Steve Jones entered an order in which he ruled that the electoral district maps we approved in 2021, including our congressional map, violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. As a result, he ordered that new maps must be drawn, but he allowed us to remedy the violation by drawing the new maps ourselves. That's why we're here today, and that's why we've been called into special session. Just as with our House and Senate maps, Judge Jones has given us specific guidance on how we can comply with his order, or the portion of it that involve congressional maps. He wrote, and I quote, "The remedy involves an additional majority-black congressional district in West Metro Atlanta." That's from the often quoted page 509 of Judge Jones' order. So here again, it falls to us in the General Assembly to comply with Judge Jones' order, as he has allowed us to do. The bill you have before you will adopt a congressional map that does, that does just that. It fully complies with Judge Jones' order by enacting the required congressional district, and it places that district in West Metro. So the map is up there. In compliance with Judge Jones' order, the map enacts one new majority-black congressional district. It creates New Congressional District 6, and that's the district that's kind of the eggshell color there, you know, in the, if you're familiar with the Georgia geography, to the west side of Atlanta. It includes portions of Fulton, Douglas, and Cobb Counties, just like the map that was proposed by the plaintiff's expert in the Pendergrass case. That's one of the cases in which the judge entered his order, and that was the case involving congressional districts. This map would preserve the same split of Douglas and Fayette Counties as under our current map, so that way we don't have to go into Congressional District 3. And it also incorporates into the new District 6 portions of South Fulton County and Southeast Cobb that are now in Existing District 13. As with our House and Senate plans, after creating this new district, changes had to be made to the other districts around New Congressional District 6. The changes to the other districts are, as we have been recalling them this week, the ripple effects. That results, as you recall, primarily from constitutional legal requirements that districts be the same size. We've previously discussed, on two occasions, how these ripple effects operate, so I won't belabor that process again. I'll save you from a few more minutes of your life you'll never get back. But I will note, however, that we're allowed very little deviation in the congressional maps, unlike with legislative maps for our House and Senate. We have traditionally limited ourselves to plus or minus 1% with respect to our State House and Senate maps, which, by the way, is a fairly rigorous percentage. A lot of states aren't quite so exacting. But the law concerning permissible, permissible deviations is different for congressional districts. We are constitutionally limited to a deviation of plus or minus one person with regard to congressional plans. So each of the districts have to be drawn so that they are within one person of the ideal district size. So the deviations are much more restrictive in these congressional districts. So as, as the ripple effect, and by the way, that ideal size in a congressional district is 765,136 people, so it's about 3/4 of a million people. As the ripple effect spread and changes are made to other districts, traditional redistricting principles were applied. The principles include the same ones we've discussed previously, maintaining the district populations so the deviations are within the required range. Here, it's plus or minus one person. Limiting additional split counties as much as possible, drawing the new districts utilizing most recent precincts from county government, so that makes it easier for our local election officials to administer these, elections under these maps. Ensuring all the districts are contiguous and reasonably compact in shape, ensuring that communities of interest are protected as far as possible, and another goal was to ensure that existing partisan balance of congressional plan remain the same, so we maintain the continuity of representation. As a result, we did consult political data. So I'll briefly review the actual changes. If you look up to Congressional District 6, can we zoom in a little bit on that, or is that our, there we go, that gets a little better. Thank you. So I mentioned Congressional District 6, that's the new majority-black district, and it has a black voting age population of 51.75%, which is a performing percentage. So that's the eggshell district there, out on the, to the left of Atlanta. The district connects, and it is located in the same location as the proposed district that was submitted by one of the plaintiffs, or the plaintiff's expert in the congressional case. It connects a number of suburbs around Metro Atlanta that are all experiencing growth, enter diverse communities, and Judge Jones found that those communities, or that district design respects communities of interest. Now, when we drew 6, we took significant portions of Existing Districts 13 and 5, and parts of 14 and 11 to create District 6. So those districts have to be restored to the correct population size. So, starting with District 5, that district shifts east. That was the same thing that the plaintiff's plan did. It, this district remains centered on the city of Atlanta, includes the airport, as it has for a number of decades now. In the process of drawing that district, the black voting age population increased to 51.06%, so it also becomes a majority-black district. Kind of continuing to the east, Congressional District 4, it also shifts east. It moves out of the eastern suburbs it previously occupied. Now it tracks northeast up I-85 in the Beaufort Highway corridor. It includes a number of suburban Atlanta communities that are growing and share a number of similar interests. So now going back to the sort of south side of Congressional District 6, New Congressional District 6 took a lot of existing Congressional District 13's territories, so 13 has shifted significantly around to the east. It begins in the west with portions of Clayton and Henry that are currently in District 13, and we preserve the existing split of Henry County, which I think is important, because again, that makes administering an election under this map more familiar to election officials. It stays in the Atlanta suburbs by taking in all of Rockdale and part of Newton Counties, along with a significant portion of Gwinnett. The idea is that the district follows an outer ring that includes Metro Atlanta suburbs that are similarly situated and have similar interests. So let me, before I move on, let me just pause and be clear. The plan increases the number of majority-black districts from the current plan by adding the required majority-black district in Metro Atlanta, or West Metro, as required by Judge Jones, that's the new 6, and in the course of redrawing existing districts, District 5 became a majority-black district as well. So while we currently have two majority-black congressional districts, 4 and 13, this proposed plan has four, 4, 5, 6, and 13, which is about 29% of the districts in the state. All right, and going back to our grand tour, as George Jones would say, so when new District 6 was created, territory in southwest Cobb was removed from Congressional District 14 and added to the new Congressional District 6. So that's no longer in Congressional District 14. Meanwhile, part of northwest Cobb is added to District 14. Gordon County comes out of District 14 and is added to District 11. So otherwise, District 14 maintains its general shape and the northwest Georgia character of the district. That's the one in that kind of pink up there in the corner. Congressional District 11 also changes its split of Cobb to accommodate the proposed new District 6. That's the one that's sort of in the taupe color. It takes in Gordon County from 14. In order to ease the burden on election officials, the split of Cherokee County that is currently in place remains the same. That split is unchanged. Cobb currently is split four ways under the 2021 plan, but under this proposed plan, the split is reduced to a three-way split. So at this point, we, we, a lot of the existing districts have been shifted east through Metro Atlanta, which is really, you can't, if you go west from 6, you can't jump over 6 to try to increase those districts. So that's, that's pretty much the only way you can go. And then District 13 is shifted east around the south side of Atlanta and turned north through the suburbs into Gwinnett County to maintain District 13 as a district focused on Metro Atlanta suburbs. As a result, Congressional District 7 has to shift significantly north and will encompass much of the territory in current Congressional 6. The split of Hall County is new, and that recognizes an important community of interest around Lake Lanier. Moving on to, so District 7 is the one that's sort of in the lime green color there. Then District 9, it, it's, it's in the darker green. It retains much of its prior character as a northeast Georgia district and puts Jackson County back in the district, which is Congressman Clyde's home county. Because of the need for population, after adjusting for the new District 7 boundaries, proposed Congressional District 9 includes portions of northern Gwinnett County, like it did previously, but with a slightly different boundary. And Gwinnett was split three ways previously, but it's now split four ways. It's, it's one of the largest counties in the state. I believe it's second only to Fulton. And a lot of the population changes that were flowing east ended up converging there. But to compensate for that additional split, we reduced the split of Cobb. It went from a four-way split to a three-way split, which I would submit is reasonable, because Cobb is not as large a county. And finally, into the orange district up there, Congressional District 10. Its boundaries in Henry and Newton do not change. That split is preserved, but it adds a portion of Gwinnett and takes in Franklin and Hart to account for losing Jackson. Jackson went into the 9th District, as you may recall. So the southern and western boundaries have not changed. So that summarizes the changes to the map. So as you all know, my primary objective here, and I believe it's all of our primary objectives, is to comply with the court's order, which is one additional majority-black congressional district in the West Met, in the specified area, which is West Metro. This plan adds the required district. It complies with Judge Jones' order. It fulfills our obligation as a General Assembly with respect to the congressional districts. So I ask that you vote in favor of it. Mr. Speaker, I'll yield for questions.
You have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll yield the well and ask your favorable consideration of Senate Bill 3 EX. Thank you.
Very thorough presentation. Thank you. We're going on to fulfill our obligation for one hour for those opposed, one hour for those in favor, both leaders and both whips. I'm going to enlist your help. If we, the lights are still not working, so when the last person is speaking, if they get down to two minutes, I'm going to ask y'all to alert the Speaker in the well that they have two minutes remaining, so they can complete their comments, if, if we need that. Thank you for both for helping. Teamwork. Good to see. We will begin our conversation with those opposed to SB 3 EX with Chairman Billy Mitchell. Chairman Mitchell, you're recognized to speak to the bill.
Me, me, me. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to start off my remarks with a provision apparently missed by many, that was rendered by US District Court Judge Steve Jones in his order that this legislature redraw the state's political maps, ruling that they violated the Voting Rights Act by illegally diluting the power of black voters. Let me read it exactly as it comes from his order, so you don't misconstrue my comments as my opinion or misreading. This is what he says exactly in his order. "The state cannot remedy the Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan. The Republican-drawn map, which started in and passed a Senate Committee on Monday, creates a new court-ordered majority-black congressional district in West Metro Atlanta, but the map seeks to preserve the Republican 9-5 advantage in Congress by dismantling the current 7th district, which is heavily Democratic, and is majority-minority, although not majority-black. It is a minority coalition district." To repeat the judge's order, "The state cannot remedy the Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan." The author of SB 3X and Reapportionment Committee Chairman Echols said, "The committee has interpreted minority-opportunity to mean majority-black in the context of Jones' ruling." He said, "This congressional plan does not eliminate any existing majority-black districts. Instead, it takes a district that is not a majority-black district and shifts it north where it remains non-majority-black." To be clear, Chairman Echols further stated, "The Voting Rights Act protects distinct racial groups, not coalition of voters." Oh, and, and there's more. Chairman Echols went on to say that the redistricting committee has interpreted minority-opportunity to mean majority-black in the context of Jones' ruling. In Alabama, court-appointed special master ultimately drew the final congressional map after federal judges found that the Republican lawmakers revised districts still did not comply with the Voting Rights Act. "Inasmuch as no one knows the boundaries and communities of interest of our districts better than we, and the special master may not necessarily give deference to incumbency, I would prefer that we draw this in other maps, but it looks like a virtual certainty that a special master will have the last say. So for the aforementioned reasons, I stand before you today to urge you to reject this map or remand it back to committee so that we can perfect it, so that the courts will not have to intervene." Oh, the four most important words in the democracy are, "The people have spoken." So we all ought to believe in the importance of ensuring that every voice is heard and every vote counts. I, I submit to you that it is our duty to uphold the integrity of our electrical, electoral process and to ensure that every citizen has a fair and equal opportunity to participate in the democratic system. The Republican-drawn map not only fails to meet all the requirements laid out by Judge Jones' order, but it perpetuates gerrymandering and undermines the principles of fair representation. By manipulating district boundaries to favor one party over another, this map disenfranchises hundreds of thousands of Georgia voters and distorts the democratic process. At the end of Election Day, the, the results ought to reflect the will of the people, not the craftiness of mapmakers." To end where I began, "The state cannot remedy the Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan." With that, Mr. Speaker, I yield.
Gentlemen, as yield the well, Representative Nullwitz is recognized to speak to SB 3X. Representative Nullwitz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise before you today to speak in opposition to Senate Bill 3 EX. Specifically, I intend to share my concerns regarding these proposed maps as they are not in compliance with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, as well as with what this proposal means for the community that is of the most interest to me, and that's Cobb County. The instructions, as we've discussed in the court order, are clear. Add one majority-black district in South Metro Atlanta without eliminating any minority-opportunity districts. These maps do not comply with the order, and the reason they do not comply is because while CD 6 would be majority-black, CD 7, which is currently a vibrant and diverse coalition district, and which was not identified in being in violation of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act in the judge's order, went from 67% minority to 33% minority. percent minority. From sixty-seven percent to thirty-three percent. And after all that, no majority-black district was added, not in Georgia and not in South Metro. It's a wash. It's a wash, and that's not what the Constitution and the Voting Rights Act demand, and that is in direct contravention of the court's order. This body is purposefully ceding its duty and responsibility and is essentially going to require the court, again, to step in. About everyone who has come to this well, both for and against these maps, has noted how specific the judge is in his order. The judge specifically states, this is on page 509, that we cannot... Ah, page needs to turn. Come on. Let's just see. Sorry. Technology failure. "We cannot remedy the Section Two violation in West Metro Atlanta by, quote, 'eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan.'" Right now, the voting age population in Georgia Seven is thirty percent black, eleven percent Hispanic, and eleven percent Asian. That means it's a minority-opportunity district. This proposed remedy map moves eighty-eight percent. Eighty-eight percent of the folks living in this majority-minority population, they live in CD Seven, and they're currently represented by a black woman, it moves eighty-eight percent of them into a new district. Not just one new district, not just two new districts, five new districts. You cannot reasonably argue that anything of that sort was the intent of the judge. This map that we consider today does not give black voters in Georgia, more than one hundred and forty thousand black voters, as identified in the plaintiff's map, any expanded opportunities to elect candidates of their choosing, as was ordered by the court. This map does not offer the remedy that the court demands, and for that reason, I hope you will join me in voting no. But beyond noncompliance with the order, what do these maps do to Cobb? Following the 2021 reapportionment, a whole lot of folks not too far from my neighborhood were mystified and frustrated to discover that they were now included in CD Fourteen. Not only was this a very new district for the people in that part of Cobb County and in Georgia, they now had a congressional representative with whom they had, to be generous, very little in common. They were now also in a district with other communities with which they shared relatively few interests. Now, Lafayette is a wonderful place, right? It's beautiful. The Queen City, so I'm told. And I'm going to be hard-pressed for you to tell me how Lafayette is a community of interest with Astell. Again, also a fantastic place. And why these communities were apparently so compelling as to merit moving South Cobb from District Thirteen, a district that is kind of full of communities with whom they shared myriad interests, based on geography, based on demographics, their communities of interest, into the Fourteenth. Let's grab a drink to discuss, because I would love to hear what you have to say. And by the way, don't tell me that what these communities have in common is a road. We've been down that path before. I'm not buying what you're selling. Two years ago, I lived in the Thirteenth. As of this moment, I live in the Eleventh. With this new map, I will live in the Sixth. I've lived in the same house for almost nineteen years. To be clear, South Cobb is now in the proposed CD Six, which is majority-black, as we've discussed, and we're not actually creating any new districts, though. And the rest of Cobb is split between two additional districts that will in all likelihood, at least for now, be represented by a Republican. I've remarked before that fear is a powerful motivator, and I believe that that sentiment, that fear is a powerful motivator, absolutely applies to the motivation behind these maps we consider today. Cobb County is a majority-democratic county. That's the reality, right? Cobb voted for Clinton in 2016. We went for Biden by an even wider margin in 2020. Cobb chose Abrams in 2018, and again in 2022. And in 2022, the United States Senate results were even more pronounced. This, this, and the county of Isaacson, and the county of Gingrich, the county of Barr, the county that in this century, in this century, affixed stickers to science textbooks stating that evolution is but a theory. It's going to be a long time before Cobb County elects a Republican again. That's just the reality. But now we're going to have a congressional delegation that is two-thirds Republican. All right, I'm about to throw this thing out the window. So I'm going to wrap up. And what I'm going to tell you is that these maps are not in compliance with the court order. They are not in compliance with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. They don't benefit anyone in Georgia. We're basically telling the judge, yeah, we're not going to do what you say, so give us the maps that you think we deserve. And I'll finish with this. I've heard a lot this week that politics is a mean business. But to contravent the judge's order, to disregard the Constitution, to be mean, that's a choice. I yield the well.
The lady has yielded the well. Representative Jasmine Clark... There she is. I couldn't find you. There you are. Representative Clark, you're recognized to speak to Senate Bill Three EX.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, today I rise to ask you to vote no on SB Three EX because it is in violation of Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, it is in violation of Judge Steve Jones's order, and it is in violation of the will of the people. When I was younger, my family would go on road trips, and to pass the time, we would play a game called I Spy. Some of you may be familiar with it. It's a game where you give clues about something you're seeing, and others would have to try to guess what you're looking at. Well, colleagues, if you look on the monitors on either side of you, I spy with my little eye a congressional district carved up like a piece of pie. Can you guess what I'm looking at? If you guessed Congressional District Seven, then you are correct. These maps blatantly target my Congresswoman, who, unironically, was also targeted during the 2021 redistricting cycle. While I'm sure the Congresswoman is quite flattered by the GOP map drawer seeming obsession, it's not quite as flattering to the people of her congressional district that find themselves caught in the crossfire. And who are these people? Well, for one, these are my constituents. But in addition to that, if you have ever had a chance to visit Gwinnett County or come to my area, then you would know that this area is a beautiful tapestry of race, cultures, and perspectives. No single race or ethnic group holds a majority, while over sixty percent of the district is comprised of racial minority groups. This area would be a prototypical minority-opportunity district or coalition district. During the 2020 election, most of the voters in my district, again, to be clear, one of the most racially diverse districts in the state of Georgia, voted in the Congressional District Four congressional race. Two years later, in 2022, after the 2021 redistricting cycle, they voted in the Congressional District Seven congressional race. If these maps were to stand, they would now be voting in Congressional District Thirteen. Three different districts and three back-to-back elections because the GOP wants to target one woman? A black woman who ran for Congress in response to losing her only son to senseless gun violence. A woman who, since being elected, has been extremely effective in Congress and highly responsive to the community she serves. The people elected her, and it is not the job of map drawers to seek to undermine the will of the people by targeting her and thus targeting our area. An area that is not at all mentioned in the judge's order as needing to be remedied. The judge made it explicit as to where remedy was needed with our current maps. He named CD Three, CD Six, CD Eleven, CD Thirteen, and CD Fourteen, all districts west of Atlanta as areas needing remedy, but somehow the map drawers got lost and found their way up eighty-five north into Gwinnett County, northeast of Atlanta. And by unnecessarily carving up this district into oblivion, the GOP map drawers eliminate a minority-opportunity district. CD Seven goes from sixty-seven percent minority-vap to thirty-three percent. This is in direct disregard to the judge's own words, and I quote, and as many others have quoted, "The state cannot remedy Section Two violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan." So I had an opportunity to listen to the hearings, and I noticed that when people brought up the judge's actual words, the map drawers argued that Judge Jones actually meant "black" when he said "minority." First of all, how audacious and disrespectful. Judge Jones is highly intelligent and incredibly capable of speaking for himself. When he meant "black," that's exactly what he said. In that 516-page order, Judge Jones uses the word "black" over six hundred times. So I don't think him using the phrase "minority-opportunity district" was him all of a sudden misspeaking. He said what he said. "The state cannot remedy Section Two violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plans." Before I conclude, I want to bring up the people. In addition to these maps defying the Voting Rights Act and subsequent case law that states that minority coalition districts are protected under the Voting Rights Act, and these maps completely defying the judge's very specific instruction, this bill and this map completely undermines the will of the people. I listened to the testimonies from the hearings, and I reviewed the public comments submitted up to midnight about last night, then I had to go to bed. You see, I truly believe that public input is actually vital to the democratic process, and we should not merely set up public comment portals as window dressing or just to check off a box, but that those comments should be acknowledged, they should be considered, and they should be amplified. These comments come from people that send us here to do the job, and those comments and those people matter. That said, by midnight last night, there had been almost five hundred and fifty comments submitted to that portal. Of those comments, people from all across the state, including individuals from Metro Atlanta, all the way down to Chatham County, all the way up to Fannin County, and more, spoke their mind. Almost every single comment, five hundred and fifty of them, almost every single comment was opposed to the maps we are voting on or have voted on, or the map drawing process, with the exception of three, and one of those just said, "Rise up." I think they might have been on the wrong portal. Maybe you don't care about the Voting Rights Act. Maybe you don't care to listen to Judge Jones, but I would hope that you would care enough to know how your constituents feel. Their resounding sentiment is clear: Vote no on this map. Don't let political greed or partisan posturing put us in a position where we end up like Alabama. I started out playing a little game with you called I Spy, but the truth is, this is not a game. Do you understand the gravity of this moment? Y'all, we are here because there are people in this chamber that voted to rob the people of their constitutional rights. That's why we're here. In 2022, people in our state were forced to vote on unlawful, unconstitutional maps. That is a serious thing. That is shameful. We have been called here to specifically right that egregious wrong. This map doesn't do that, and instead trades one unlawful map for another unlawful map while going out of its way to target a sitting Congresswoman. That's not okay. Please do not vote to disenfranchise Georgia voters again. Stand on business. Vote no. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
The lady has yielded the well. We have another speaker. Representative Kenred is recognized to speak to the bill, SB Three X. Representative Kenred.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have lived in Gwinnett County since the year of my birth, 1966. 1966, Lyndon Baines Johnson was president. In November of that year, Lester Maddox would be elected Georgia's governor. To put it in a pro-sports timeline, 1966 was the year the Milwaukee Braves became the Atlanta Braves and brought Hammer and Hank to us. That same year, the Falcons became a franchise. Sixty-six was their first year. In 1966, Gwinnett's population was about sixty-five thousand. It was ethnically homogeneous, and the county was just becoming a suburb but was still largely rural. For fifty-seven years now, I have been an eyewitness to my county's growth and evolution. It's nothing short of dramatic. Gwinnett is now home to almost one million people. We are larger than six states. I recently vacationed in Montana, where by my surprise, I ran into Representative Vance Smith and his wife. I said, "What are you doing here?" He said, "What are you doing here?" He was visiting his son. We were on vacation. But in Montana, they just have a little over a million people, about the same population as Gwinnett, but they are one of the larger geographical states. So in Montana, there are seven people for every square mile. In Gwinnett, there are twenty-three hundred people per square mile. In sixty-six, Gwinnett was almost exclusively white. When I was in school, my entire K through twelve experience, I never went to school with one person of color. That was from seventy-two to eighty-four. But today, Gwinnett is very different. It's the most diverse county in Georgia and one of the most diverse in the U.S. In 1990, we were still ninety-seven percent white, but thirty years later, we are minority-majority. In our awesome public school system, students are coming from one hundred and eighty-one countries and speak over a one hundred languages. I love our spiritual diversity in Gwinnett. We have seventeen mosques, multiple Buddhist temples. The largest Hindu temple in the southeast is in Gwinnett County. When I put my preaching glasses on, I see Gwinnett as a coat of many colors and a sound of many waters. It's beautiful. Now, the promise of representative government is just that: representation. In Gwinnett, elected officials across municipal, county, and state government did not reflect its diverse population shifts for a while. Gwinnett became minority-majority several years ago, but its political power was still controlled by white officials. But then came 2018 and 2020, when organically, because of more civic engagement and voter participation, true representation happened in the statehouse delegation, the senate delegation, the county commission, and throughout our sixteen-city councils. Electors now looked a lot more like Gwinnett. The 2020 census came along, as it does every ten years, and the subsequent redrawing of electoral maps to account for population growth and shifts. And even though there had been a significant democratic and demographic and political shift in Gwinnett, at the state level, the historically dominant group maintained their majority, their political power, and the power of the pen to create new maps. And as we witnessed, those maps were drawn to the dominance group's political advantage, aka gerrymandering. It has been said that the pen is mightier than the sword. That actually still rings true, because historically in this nation, whoever has held the map pen in their hand has had the power, from the drawing of colonies of state borders over tribal lands and a hostile takeover of this continent, to the redlining of our U.S. cities. A red pen and a map, circles drawn around the inner city where blacks were pressured to live, property values were intentionally devalued, creating a ghetto community. Outside those red lines, white families created suburbia, and property values were artificially inflated, exacerbating the racial wealth gap that we're still grappling with today. Currently, white families have thirteen times the wealth that black families do. The pen, this pen, it's small, but it wields a lot of power. We saw the power of that pen as the new 2021 maps that were drawn and passed from this General Assembly. That map drawing was reminiscent of the past. That map drawing was reminiscent of the past, coming from this same energy, this same spirit of control and manipulation, of discrimination and disenfranchisement. It was so blatant that a federal judge struck down the maps for violating the 1965 Voting Rights Act. The pen was once again used to dilute black power. I'm just so disheartened that sixty- I'm just so disheartened that sixty years later, after the Voting Rights Act has passed, these shenanigans continue. Unfortunately, we are not in a post-racial society. Racism has just shape-shifted. The judge ordered us to redraw the maps, sending us into special session, but these new twenty-twenty-three maps are no better. The bad twenty-one electoral maps are just being papered over by more bad maps from this special session. We have wasted our time and a lot of taxpayer money with this session. A pastor friend of mine once told me, "Greg, there's nothing to be learned from the second kick of a mule." Question: Is it really too much to ask elected officials just to do the right thing? Is it too heavy of a lift? Is it a bridge too far just to do the right thing and draw fair maps? Spoiler alert: Georgia has changed. We grew a million people in the last decade, and the overwhelming majority of that growth was people of color, and they brought their politics with them. Georgia is a purple state, a swing state, and fair maps should reflect that fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty political landscape. How can you with a straight face draw a nine-five congressional map? That's actually one more than the previous eight-six map. It's laughable. You've now had two cracks at this and still didn't get it right. So much for wisdom, moderation, and justice. It's really disappointing. Colleagues, it's not nineteen sixty-six anymore. Or is it? Between the Robert E. Lee and Alexander Stephens statues and portraits out in the Capitol Hall and these grossly gerrymandered maps, I just can't tell what year or decade we are in. Please vote no to S B three X. I yield the well.
The gentleman has yielded the well. That completes those that desire to speak in opposition of S B three X. Now we'll move on to those speaking in favor. Chair recognizes Governor Flora Leader, one of them. Representative Sue Hong, Representative Hong, is recognized to speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning. I know there's been a lot of criticism on Chairman Leverett's map, and there was an alternative map that was presented by the Minority Leader Beverly in committee, so I wanted to kind of draw comparisons between the two maps here today. Chairman Leverett's plan drew a congressional map that represented Georgia communities of interest. And as I mentioned, the Democrat plan was offered in committee as an alternative, but that is not a plan drawn by Georgians. That was a plan drawn by the plaintiff's expert in the Section two cases. And that was an expert who testified that he relied only on communities he could see on a map. He didn't look at the reality on the ground in these areas, and did not know about other Georgia communities or interests in drawing the plan. In fact, he relied on regional commissions as a community of interest at one point, something that doesn't really make sense if you know Georgia. And yet, the Democratic Caucus has chosen to rely on that map, which was drawn by one out-of-state expert, and did not rely on the thoughts or opinions of any Georgians except those that happened to be directly involved in litigation. The Democratic Caucus map doesn't, actually doesn't protect Georgia communities at all. So let's compare the two plans, because the majority plan ensures that Georgia communities are protected while complying with Judge Jones's order. The Democratic plan cuts across the mountain range of North Georgia, while the map before us today maintains the current boundary between Murray and Fannin and Gilmer Counties. The Democrat plan runs District thirteen from Fayette County all the way out to Butts and Jasper Counties, connecting counties which have little in common. The map before us today places those same counties in a more rural-oriented district that runs in East Georgia. The Democrat plan places Hancock County in the same district as the North Georgia mountains in Raven and Towns Counties. That connection makes no sense, and it is avoided on the plan here before us today. Now, let me talk about Gwinnett County. I know there were some mentions of Gwinnett County, and that is my home county. Some of the Democrat reps that have come up here have complained about the four-way split of that county. But as mentioned, we all know that Gwinnett is a large and growing county, and having multiple members of Congress makes sense. In fact, Gwinnett is the second-largest county in all of Georgia with over a million residents, and it trails close behind only Fulton County in population size. And the four-way split we propose here is far from unprecedented. In fact, the Democrats' plan, despite their complaints about the four-way county split in Gwinnett, and our plan, have their own four-way county split in their proposed plan, right next to our Gwinnett County and the only county with more population than Gwinnett, which is in Fulton County. Our map here today also places areas of Gwinnett County that are still represented by Republicans in the General Assembly and districts currently held by Republicans. As a Gwinnett resident, I like and appreciate the attention the county will get now with four members of Congress helping watch out for our needs of our county. The other county that I represent is Hall County. The two-way split in Hall County recognizes an important community of interest around Lake Lanier. This map provides additional representation for Hall County residents, which is a positive, because now we have two members of Congress looking out for our interests. And lastly, I'd like to talk about Cobb County, a county that I grew up in. We've heard some complaints about a three-way split of Cobb County on the plan before us, but to be clear, the Democrat plan also split Cobb three ways. And the Democrat plan uses an almost illogical split of Fayette County, taking just a small number of people out instead of using the existing boundaries. Democrats chose to rely on the plaintiff's expert instead of using their judgment to ensure people who know Georgia, people like Gina Wright and her reapportionment office, and the elected senators in the state, to draw a map that fairly represents Georgians. This map, Chairman Leverett's map, does exactly what we were ordered to do by Judge Jones, and I urge you to vote yes for this map. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
The lady has yielded the well. We have one other speaker in favor of S B three X. Chair recognizes Representative Reeves to speak to the bill. Representative Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, map drawing is not an easy process. The members of the House who served on the redistricting committee can confirm that, and you've seen it the last week. Congressional maps are the hardest to draw, because pursuant to the U.S. Constitution and decisions by the U.S. Supreme Court, you don't have a percentage of deviation. It has to be down to the very person, one person, one vote. And our redistricting office, led by Gina Wright, has delivered maps that comply with Judge Jones's order and that constitutional and U.S. Supreme Court rule of one person and one vote. Ms. Wright has been amazing in this process. The five-hundred-page order was issued just a few weeks before Thanksgiving. The office, in conjunction with the legislature, both parties, has worked tirelessly, and Ms. Wright has been a consummate professional. She is, she has been in the redistricting office here in Georgia for two decades, for a generation. She has been qualified as an expert witness in numerous federal court cases, which the lawyers in the body know is the highest standard for expert witnesses under the Daubert standard. She has taught redistricting to professionals across the country, as well as around the state legislative bodies and national groups. So we have the best person and the best office in Georgia to draw maps with Ms. Wright and her professionals in her office, and they have delivered on that, and they have been responsive to both parties during this process. Drawing the new sixth district, as we were instructed by Judge Jones, impacted surrounding districts. That should be no surprise, since you have no margin of deviation. You've got to have one person, one vote, and it impacted adjoining districts equally. The Democratic plan did not consider changes in districts in my area of Gwinnett County, but the congressional plan that is before you from Senator Eccles appropriately allowed those districts to be pushed to the east. Those districts inside the perimeter naturally moved into my area of Gwinnett County and also created the impact which moved District seven north. The map does not use the Voting Rights Act to achieve political aims. It maintains the partisan balance that this body previously enacted just two years ago, while fully complying with Judge Jones's order. And we know that the Voting Rights Act does not protect officials. It protects voters. It protects the rights of voters, and this plan does just that. Judge Jones told us how to comply, and we've done that. I saw Judge Jones, when he was on the Superior Court bench in Athens, he had the benefit of Judge Lawton Stephens, who was longtime a member of this body and has been a fellow judge. Before he went onto the federal bench, Judge Jones got to see the impact of tough decisions. I saw him do a custody case back when I was in law school, so he's been deciding important things for a long time. He had a well-reasoned five-hundred-and-sixteen-page order that the committee and many of you in this body have read and carefully tried to comply with, and Senator Eccles's plan does comply. Even with the compressed timeframe shortly before the Thanksgiving holidays, the, both Senator Eccles, as well as the Democrat side of the aisle, had time to produce maps. Senator Eccles's map was circulated longer than the alternative by the other side of the aisle, and both received public comment. There was reference to the public comments. The committee read them. You can read them. They're online. It was about five hundred at last count, and there were many, many witnesses regarding the maps. It is a fair map for the people of Georgia. It complies with Judge Jones's order while meeting Georgia's goals as a state that is open for representation of all people. And addressing some Gwinnett County issues, I won't repeat what Governors Flora Leader Hong eloquently said about Gwinnett County being nearly as big as Fulton County, but I will point out, Gwinnett has the state's largest school system, nearly two hundred thousand kids in school, so it should be no surprise with a county and the magnitude and size of Gwinnett that you're going to have more districts in a county that size. That's larger than a lot of metro areas around the country. Also, Mike Collins has a very small part of Gwinnett, but it's on University Parkway, three sixteen, on the way to Athens, where we all drive to the football games on that road. It should be no surprise that part of Gwinnett County is linked with northeast Georgia and Athens with it being there on University Parkway. And also, from Gwinnett County, I've been there twenty years. There have been multiple times over the last decade and two decades that Gwinnett County has been linked to DeKalb. Former Congressman John Linder was originally from Tucker. He served in the legislature from North DeKalb, and DeKalb and Gwinnett were linked then. You've had both majority Democrat and majority Republican districts that have had DeKalb and Gwinnett combined with recent precedent. So for those reasons, I would, and just one more time, I'd like to applaud Chairman Leverett. I'd like to applaud the Democrat and Republican members of the redistricting committee. The time has been put in on this congressional, on this congressional map. It is a good map, and I would ask for your favorable support. Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
Gentleman has yielded the well. That concludes the speakers. On our bill now, we have a couple more presentations, but first we need to, is there any objection to the previous question being ordered? Chair has none. The previous question is ordered. We'll move on now to the Minority Report, which will, up to twenty minutes, and then the chairman's time. The Minority Whip, Representative Sam Park, is recognized to present the Minority Report to S B three X. Representative Park.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, colleagues and friends. To begin, I would like to thank the gentleman from House District one twenty-three, Chairman Rob Leverett, for doing his duty with honor, integrity, and fairness. While I strongly disagree with the Republican maps that have come out of the House Reapportionment and Redistricting Committee, I appreciate the manner in which the representative from Elberton conducted his committee meetings under the circumstances. I also recognize that I've made statements here in this well and during the fight over Gwinnett's local maps last year that have offended some members here in this body. That was not my intent. I'm not here to be mean for the sake of being mean. I've been taught that open rebuke is better than hidden love. I've been taught to speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, to speak up for all the rights of all who are destitute, to speak up and judge fairly, and defend the rights of the poor and needy. I've been taught that when I see something that is not right, not just, not fair, that I have a moral obligation to say something, to do something, to do my part to help bend the arc of history toward justice for all. That is why I fight as hard as I do. These Republican maps for Congress, for the state senate and house, they are not right. They are not just, and they certainly are not fair to Georgia voters, especially for black voters and voters of color, whose freedom to elect their candidate of choice is being attacked and undermined. As recognized by the federal court that struck down the twenty-twenty-one Republican maps for being racially discriminative, black voters in Georgia, whose voting rights have been injured by the violation of Section two of the Voting Rights Act, have suffered significant harm. Now, as a member from Gwinnett County as well, frankly, I've been disappointed to hear members from the other side who represent Gwinnett talking about these maps being fair for Gwinnett County. I cannot ever forget what happened with Gwinnett's local maps just last year, in which members in this body, in my opinion, broke the rules of this house to draw out the first black woman in two hundred years elected to the Gwinnett Board of Commissioners. That is unacceptable, and I will always, always remember that action that was taken here in this body, unfortunately. As noted by my Democratic colleagues, the Republican map clearly violates Judge Jones's federal court order. On pages five oh nine to five ten in Section G regarding the remedy, Judge Jones writes, "The state cannot remedy the Section two violations described herein by eliminating minority opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan." Further, on pages five ten to five eleven, Judge Jones writes, "An acceptable remedy must completely remedy the prior dilution of minority voting strength and fully provide equal opportunity for minority citizens to participate and to elect candidates of their choice." Like the unlawful Republican map for state senate, the Republican congressional map does not provide relief for voters in the areas identified by the court as needing relief from vote dilution. More than a hundred and forty thousand black voters are still denied the ability to elect their candidate of choice. And like the unlawful Republican map for state house, the Republican congressional map eliminates a minority opportunity district in Gwinnett County by obliterating Georgia's seventh congressional district, a majority-minority district where sixty-seven percent of the voting age population is comprised of black, Hispanic, and Asian-American voters. Now, this district contains sixty-seven percent white voters and only thirty-three percent minority. This open defiance of a federal court order is alarming. It is reminiscent of the refusal to accept the outcome of the twenty-twenty presidential election that led to the January sixth insurrection. On that note, we've seen bipartisan condemnation against acts of violence and domestic terrorism. We all care about public safety, and it is disingenuous to state otherwise. I look forward next year to the bipartisan condemnation against the January sixth domestic terrorists who terrorists who attacked the United States Capitol Building, who injured 138 police officers, and killed five people, including a police officer. I sincerely hoped my Republican colleagues would understand and comply with Judge Jones' order. I was glad to hear y'all say repeatedly that your primary goal was to comply with Judge Jones' order in every respect. I held out hope that y'all would do as y'all said. But upon careful analysis of the Republicans' maps, it is self-evident that the Republican Party's primary goal is to maintain political power at all costs to the detriment of Georgia voters, our representative democracy, and the rule of law. As I noted last week, the blatant disregard for existing law that protects majority-minority districts, such as the 7th Congressional District, demonstrates an intent to once again attack the Voting Rights Act by narrowing its protections. Recognize that it will be Hispanic-Americans and Asian-American voters who will be harmed and lose protections if Republicans succeed in their continued attacks against the Voting Rights Act. For more than 30 years, the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals held that minority coalitions are protected from having their votes diluted under the Voting Rights Act. Yet multiple times throughout this special session, Republicans, including the Senate Chair of Repourcement, have publicly stated that they know better, that a minority opportunity group, that a minority opportunity district must be a district where a single racial group is a majority. That excludes Hispanic-Americans and Asian-American voters. The public positions taken by Republicans on coalition majority-minority districts means Hispanic and Asian-American voters who vote together in a coalition should not be afforded an opportunity to elect their candidate of choice. That multiracial coalitions can and should be divided and conquered. What a shame. As the first Asian-American Democrat ever elected to the Georgia General Assembly, I was provided the opportunity to serve here in this body by building a multiracial coalition, a coalition of white, Black, Hispanic, and Asian-American voters who share the same values, hopes, and dreams, who want access to quality affordable health care, world-class public education, and safe communities free from gun violence. The ability to transcend our differences and find common ground makes Georgia and our state and our country stronger. We are stronger together. Unfortunately, this Republican effort to dismantle the Voting Rights Act, to divide voters by race and dilute their political power, to foster division by pitting communities against one another, will only make us weaker. As the good book says, "You know a tree by its fruit. Every good tree bears good fruit, but a bad tree bears bad fruit. Thus, by their fruit you will recognize them." Unfortunately, there is a lot of bad fruit coming out of today's Republican Party, a lot of Republican policies and actions that have and will cause great harm. I also know there are a lot of good men and women in the Republican Party. I have family members who are Republicans. I've been taught to love the sinner and hate the sin. So to the best of my ability, I will do what love requires in all circumstances, as that is what my faith commands. And I will treat every member in this body with respect and kindness that many of my Republican colleagues have shown me. But I will also not be silent. I will do all I can to stand and fight against the harm caused by Republican policies that put the pursuit of power before God, country, and my fellow Georgian. So as I began my remarks last week, I will end my remarks today. This Republican map is unlawful. Judge Jones can and should reject it. I urge every member of this body to vote no. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
Gentleman has yielded the well. Minority Leader Beverly, you are recognized to speak to SB 3X. SB 3X Representative Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. Before I begin my comments, a member of this House referred to the Democratic map, and so I'd like to address that for just a moment for those who have not seen the map or have watched the hearings. I'm grateful that you referred to the map, because that's the map, the substitute, that we should use to send back to the judge. But I want to correct something that you said, and that is this, is that it was the illustrative map that was given to me by the Senate, by every congressional member, Democratic member, who said, "We agree to this map." You called it an outside map. I called it an inside map, because I gave that map to Gina, who you referred to, who you guys refer to, who we love as a House. And she cleaned it up, because they were wrong. She had to move certain blocks, 25 or so, Gina. We had to clean that map up. It was, it's a Georgia map! Please stop with the shenanigans already. A rising opposition to Senate Bill 3X. The Republican map for redrawing the state's congressional dishes, but before I let, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not going to go that fast. I know y'all rush for time. But I need to slow to sit down, because I want y'all to hear this. There are two groups of people I don't like very much right now. The Senate, because they left a couple days ago. I don't like them right now. I think we, as a House, don't like them right now. And I really can't stand the state of Alabama, what they did. Go Dawgs, sick 'em, last week. And the Senate, in their arrogance, threw a couple of hand grenades into the House, and then they walked away as if they didn't do it. We had to deal with issues of international significance. Started in the Senate, they throw it in the House, and they walk away. We had to deal with a training center. Another hand grenade, throw it in the House, walk away. And now we have to take up their map. Another hand grenade, they throw into our House and walk away. Mr. Speaker, I say we return a few cannonballs to them, one of which being, "Let's expand Medicaid now," and it comes out of the House. Let's deal with CON as it relates to maternal mortality, and let's send it back to them and make them deal with that. And lastly, but not least, let's take this map and rip it up, because the judge is going to do the same thing, I suspect. Why don't we, as a House, stand for something in this moment? I oppose this map, because this ain't a Georgia map. This is an Alabama map. Let me explain. A federal court in Alabama held earlier this year that Alabama's congressional map violated Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act because it diluted voting strength of Black folk in Alabama. The court gave the Alabama legislator an opportunity to redraw the map, to add an additional Black opportunity district, that is, a district in which Black voters would have an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice to the United States House of Representatives. That happened in Alabama. What did Alabama do? The Alabama legislator thumb-ditched-nosed at the federal court and drew a new plan without any additional opportunity districts. The federal court quickly rejected that map and drew its own. And in the process, Alabama became the laughingstock of the nation for its unwillingness to change their opinion and their backwardness. What do you call those Alabamas? What do you call Alabama? I don't know what you call them. I call them backwards. And as I look at the analysis of Georgia game, it was a team loss. I look at the events that have unfolded over the past few days, the Senate and the state of Alabama want to deal, want us to do their bidding. But this is our House. This is our House. We're the big dogs in this House. And we need to say, as the big dogs say, "Go Dawgs, sick 'em." Woo, 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 woo. I fear, ladies and gentlemen, that SB 3X takes us down the Alabama path. They want us to blatantly and intentionally defy the federal court's order that found our congressional map in violation of the Voting Rights Act. As in Alabama, the federal judge in Georgia has given us an opportunity to draw a new map. He instructed that the new map must create an additional majority district in West Metro Atlanta. Page 509 to 511. It was clear that the state cannot remedy Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority opportunity districts elsewhere in the plan, but that is precisely what the Senate map did, that we're carrying their water, get out of here. It creates a new majority Black district in West Metro Atlanta, but it also eliminates an existing minority opportunity district in Gwinnett. We've already litigated that, even though we're in a public space. Make no mistake, this is no accident. It's unlawful, it's unconstitutional, it's wrong. And we should not want any part of that. Football aside, we don't want to be like Alabama. Georgians, all Georgians deserve better than that. Vote no, and say to the Senate and to Alabama, "We reject Alabama's playbook." We are the big dogs, and we call the balls and strikes. Before I close, I want to correct the record on one thing. During the debate on this bill in the Senate, one of our colleagues over there asserted that the Voting Rights Act doesn't protect minority opportunity districts like the one in Gwinnett County that this map eliminates. That's simply untrue. We are the last people standing. I think they got the last word, but we should get the last laugh in. The 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, which covers Georgia, Alabama, and Florida, has long recognized that Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act protects minority opportunity districts like the one in Gwinnett that this map eliminates. The leading case, the leading case, is concerned citizens of Hardy County versus Hardy County Board of Commissioners, where the 11th Circuit, the same circuit, recognized that the Voting Rights Act protects districts like the one in Gwinnett, where Black, Hispanic, and Asian voters vote cohesively as a political coalition, and by doing so can elect candidates of their choice. Judge Jones certainly knew that. And that's why he said that this body can't remedy the Section 2 violation by eliminating minority opportunity districts elsewhere in the map. The law on this is clear in the 11th Circuit. And we must act, we must not act as though it isn't. If we do so, it's to our peril. This map, this hand grenade they throw in, and they're putting us on a sinking ship right now, right before holiday vacation, where they're somewhere, somewhere, maybe on an island, having a good old time for the last couple days while we're sitting here doing our people's work. So I respectfully urge you to vote no on Senate Bill 3X. They want us to fall on a sword while they are having Mai Tais somewhere and they're doing whatever they're doing. We're the big dogs. Mr. Speaker, I, go Dawgs, sick 'em. I yield the well.
Gentleman has yielded the well. That completes our Minority Report. We'll now move on to chairman's time for up to, not mandatory, but up to 20 minutes. Chairman Leverett is recognized to speak to SB 3X.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the House, we've heard a number of arguments, and I would like to respond to them in a brief manner, if I may. The primary argument I'm hearing is that although the maps create an additional majority Black district in the area the judge specifically told us to, they somehow do not comply with his order. And the reason we're told is because of the language dealing with minority opportunity districts. Now, it is admittedly, the quote up there is accurate. That is an accurate quote. That is what Judge Jones said. And I, like the previous speaker, believe him to be a very intelligent person, and he knows how to write an order. This is, this order, I don't agree with everything he says in it, but nobody can deny the craft and the hard work that went into that order. It's very impressive. But I believe we're being unfair to Judge Jones when we're construing some of this language outside the context of the case that actually was litigated. So there is a, there is a provision, I've had it on the screen before at this point, I'm assuming you've already memorized it, but it said, "The remedy involves an additional majority Black congressional district in West Metro Atlanta." That's the portion of the remedy provision of his order that addresses the congressional maps. The map you looked at earlier does that. District 6, majority Black district, it's in West Metro Atlanta, it almost matches the proposed district the plaintiff submitted. But we're told, well, no, it really doesn't comply because of this language about minority opportunity districts. Well, I agree, it is meaningful language, but it does not have the meaning that my friends across the aisle ascribe to it. And the reason it doesn't is because that minority opportunity districts, as it's being construed by our friends across the aisle, was never mentioned in that phrasing or that definition in the case. That is not a legally defined term. The term gets used loosely in different contexts. In the context of this case, the minority that was being discussed, whose rights were trying to be vindicated, were Black voters. If you take the same page that was quoted from and run down the page, all right, so on page 509 at the bottom, it starts, "The state cannot remedy the Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority opportunity districts elsewhere in the plans." Keep in mind, the judge was careful to say "an additional" majority Black congressional district. Additional. He was trying to make it clear to us, to avoid confusion that it happened in Alabama. And that is the bitterest pill right there, to be accused of being like our friends to the West. That is really a low blow, I would submit to you. My goal this whole session has been to do just not what they did, to do everything opposite from what they did. And I don't think you can say that we are being like Alabama when we are passing a map that includes an additional majority Black congressional district. And I credit Judge Jones, because he was writing in the context of the Allen decision. And so he knew that that order was not exactly clear. So he wanted to make it abundantly clear what we have to do. But he is writing in the context of a case in which the only claims have involved Black voters. They didn't involve other minorities, and they didn't involve this somewhat novel and largely rejected theory that you can take people from different minorities and add them up to get above 50% in a potential proposed district. We're citing from 11th Circuit, but the language in that Hardy case is dicta. Now, the lawyers know what that means. Those of you who are not lawyers, basically means it's just something that the judge said that was not part of his holding or his ruling. It isn't precedent. It doesn't govern things going forward. And as a matter of fact, a three-judge panel in the Northern District right here, as recently as October 23rd, the same date this order came out, said just that. That's only dicta. It's not binding. And it's kind of interesting to know that one of the judges on the three-judge panel was Judge Steve Jones. Now, the only district, the only circuit court, and for those who don't know, the United States, the federal appellate system is divided up into circuits. We're in the 11th here. The 6th Circuit has specifically rejected this notion that my friends from the other side are pushing about whether the Voting Rights extends protection to those kinds of districts. To be clear, District 7 is not a majority Black district. It was not litigated. It wasn't the subject of this lawsuit. Nobody was talking about it in here, because it was out beyond the scope of the claims. All the claims had to do with the rights of Black voters, had to do with statistical data involving Black voters, not other minorities. The only minority they were talking about in this case, or these three cases, was Black voters. That was it. And if you read on down from the sentence that was put up there earlier, the judge said, "The court retains jurisdiction to determine whether the remedial plans adopted by the General Assembly remedy the Section 2 violations by incorporating additional legislative districts in which Black voters have a demonstrable opportunity to elect their candidates of choice." Later on, he says, "This will require the court to evaluate a remedial proposal under the jingle standard," which is a lawsuit, or a Supreme Court case that everyone's still traveling under when we do Voting Rights cases, "under the jingle standard to determine traveling under when we do Voting Rights cases, "under the jingle standard to determine whether it provides black voters with an additional opportunity district." So the 6th Circuit has specifically rejected this, this sort of coalition, this notion that coalition districts are protected under the Voting Rights Act. The 11th Circuit case that keeps being sort of passed around as providing just irrefutable support is not that at all, and the third, a three-judge panel has said so. And the Supreme Court has never said that. If anything, we believe Supreme Court precedent supports just the contrary view, that it's not protected under the Voting Rights Act. So this notion that we're violating the order because we're doing something that the judge told us not to do is misconstruing that language. Anyway, you, every time the word "opportunity" appears in this order, it is either within the same sentence, or the same phrase, or the same page as a reference to black voters. That was the minority that was at issue. Those were all the claims in this case. So I think to say, well, Judge Jones knew what he was doing, he sure did. He was working his tail off to get a 500-page order out in a limited amount of time because he was being caring and considerate enough to us to get that out to us so we would have time to act before he felt like he needed to. And I take, I appreciate that so much, and I take the responsibility we have to comply with that order so seriously. And this notion that, that we're throwing plans up here that cavalierly don't comply with the order, or that follow the example of our good neighbors to the West, is just particularly offensive. We're adding the additional majority black districts in every plan, just like the judge is telling us, and I appreciate him so much for giving us that degree of guidance. Now, so, we had some other claims made here that, of course, we're not in compliance with Section 2. Well, again, I think the argument being made about this coalition district thing, or this argument, is going beyond Judge Jones's order and going a little above his head and say, well, you should have, you know, if we don't do that, even though the judge didn't say that's an issue or a consideration, you've still got to deal with it. It's sort of like saying, well, you may comply with the order, but you're still not complying with Voting Rights Act because Judge Jones didn't know what he was doing. And I, I would agree that I don't agree uniformly with his ruling, but I don't think you can say that we're not complying with the order by creating the additional majority black One of the people in the well here said that there was no majority black district added. We actually added two. 6 and 5 is now a majority black district. 6 was the one that we drew specifically pursuant to the court's order, 5 became majority black as part of the redistricting process. And the split in Cobb is actually reduced. It was split four ways, it's reduced three ways. And the area that was so controversial the last time around in Southwest Cobb, it's been taken out of 14 and put in the new 6. I think that'll be a great relief to people in that area, and would be a great relief to their current representative as well. Now, there are also allegations that we've targeted particular people, and that's simply not the case. We were, we were redistricting. That's what it's called. We didn't ask for the lawsuit, we didn't want to be here. Judge Jones ordered us to be here. That's the reason we're redrawing the maps. We would just soon been at home right now. We're having to draw the maps because the judges ordered it, because a lawsuit was filed. And that's fine. You know, everyone's got a right to file lawsuits if they feel their rights need to be vindicated by a judge and by a court. But to say that we've targeted ignores the posture of this session. This was not just called by us for fun, it was, it was called because we were ordered to by the judge, and because a lawsuit was filed to invoke his jurisdiction. The other argument that I think is, misconstrues Judge Jones's order, so, and this is referred to in the minority report, that we are somehow going, we are violating his order because we are going beyond the scope of the area he told us we needed to address. And the primary basis for that argument is page 513, where the judge said, "The Pendergrass plans had carried their burden of demonstrating a lack of equal openness in Georgia's election system as a result of the challenge for redistricting plan SB 2 EX as to the following enacted district or areas, enacted congressional districts 3, 6, 11, 13, and 14." So the argument goes, well, all he said is 3, 6, 11, 13, and 14, that's all you can touch, can't touch anything else. No Voting Rights Act order is ever read that way, and I'm not aware that any judge has ever ordered that because it would, I think, be patently unconstitutional to tell us you've got to redistrict, but this is all you can do. That would make redistricting virtually impossible to do. He's just simply, again, trying to tell us the area that we need to look at based on the evidence that was produced in the case. And moreover, the minority report points that up and says, "Our plan has a legal infirmity, but the plan offered by the, by our friends on the opposition touched more districts than those." As Representative Hong mentioned, it touches a number of other districts. So if that is a problem, it's a problem with both plans, not just our plan. But I would submit, it's not really a legal issue. I would say that, that is not an infirmity of the opposition's plan, nor is it one of The other thing that is particularly frustrating to me is, is a number of people have saying this plan disenfranchises black voters, but it's creating additional majority black district that is designed and will give blacks voters a reasonable opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. That's the whole point of the lawsuit. So to say that you're disenfranchising someone by creating a new district in which that's going to happen, that just, that strains logic from my perspective. Now, and again, I just, it bears repeating, you cannot equate this plan, or any plan that has been presented to this body, with the Alabama situation. The court over there didn't give us the guidance that Judge Jones has kindly given us. We have not thumbed our nose at him, we have done what he told us to do. And these plans will comply, I feel, with his order. I, I take that obligation very, very seriously, to produce plans that comply with the order. I truly do sincerely believe these do, based on what I believe is a reasonable reading of the order, and not one that's strained for political gain. So, Mr. Speaker, that's about all I have to say. I ask that this body please vote in favor of these plans so we can comply with Judge Jones's order. And we're all going to find out, I think, soon enough, this has sort of been an unusual situation. Usually Judge Jones is in the role of trying to interpret what we meant when we passed words. Now, we've sort of placed ourselves in that role, I suppose, that if nothing else, Judge Jones may have been getting a little chuckle out of this, saying, you know, it's not as easy as it looks, is it? So, I appreciate everybody in this room, I appreciate the debate, I appreciate so much the comments of the Whip of the Minority Party, and I have the utmost respect for him and the leadership on that side of the aisle. I know we're all ready to get home, and I would ask that you vote in favor of Senate Bill 3EX, and thank you.
Gentlemen, has yielded the well, and you did make your time constraints. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think all members of this body, as it was expressed by the minority Whip, appreciates your openness and your willingness to hear from everyone. You had a tough job to do, and we appreciate your professionalism and your knowledge, and we appreciate you working with all of us as we move through this process. All members, if you'll return to the floor, that concludes the comments that we have on SB 3 EX. All members, return to the floor. Is there any objections to agreeing to the report of the committee, which was favorable to the passage of the bill? There is objection. Does the gentleman move? Does the gentleman move? Gentleman moves. All those in favor agreeing to the report of the committee will vote yes, that's green. All those opposed vote no, that's red, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted. All members voted. If so, the clerk will lock the machines on agreeing to the report of the committee. The ayes are 97, the nays are 71, and this body has agreed to the report of the committee. Shall this bill now pass? All in favor of the passage of this bill will vote yes, all those opposed will vote Have all members now voted. I'm going to take two inquiries. For what purpose does Leader Beverly rise?
Mr. Speaker, I'll move to adjourn.
Don't recognize you for that motion there, Mr. Leader, but it was pretty clever. For what purpose does Representative Becky Evans rise?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
State inquiry.
Isn't it true, Mr. Speaker, that the judge's order said that while creating these majority black districts, you cannot eliminate minority opportunity districts elsewhere? Isn't that true, Mr. Speaker?
Representative, I've heard that stated a couple of times on both, both ways, and, but I'm sure the lady believes exactly what she stated. I think we've, we've all been heard, we've had opportunity to be heard on this bill, and I think it's time, if all members have voted, and I think they have, that the clerk will lock the machines. On the passage of the bill, the ayes are 98, the nays are 71, this bill having received a requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. Thank you, members, for your attention. Afternoon orders, we're in the morning, yes, we're still in the morning, so Chairman Tyler Paul Smith has an afternoon order. You're recognized, Chairman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of this house, today, they're not in the gallery, I don't think, but we have the Tallapoosa Primary School second grade class here. My sister-in-law is one of those great educators, and another Mrs. Smith that's with us here today, but I just wanted to welcome them to the House of Representatives. We're so glad to have y'all here today at the Georgia State House. And my law partner's wife, Ms. Farmer, you'll remember, Mr. Ryan Farmer was one of our attorneys for the caucus, so I was wrong in what I said earlier, we have one of their classes here today. If y'all will stand and help me welcome them to the people's house.
Glad to have you. Thank you for being here. Come again. Chairman Meeks, you're recognized for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I would ask you, in helping me to congratulate the Pierce County Bears, who are making their second trip to the state championship 2A game for the second time in four years, under the direction of Coach Ryan Herring. And ladies and gentlemen, it's been a great opportunity to be able to watch this coach and these players move forward in their program, who believe day in and day out in the three G's and any hashtag you will see, and that's give God glory whether you win or lose. Coach Herring and the Pierce County Bears, good luck as you face the gentleman from the 16th District, a school in his district, so, gentlemen from the 16th, we will prevail. Congratulations to the Pierce County Bears.
Good season to both of you, and good luck tomorrow night, I guess the game is. So, good luck. Representative Penage is recognized for an afternoon order. Representative Penage.
Shalom, y'all. Tonight is the first night of Hanukkah. It is the story of the Maccabees, a small band of Jewish fighters who liberated the land of Israel from the Syrian Greeks. Under the reign of Antiochus IV, the Syrian Greeks sought to impose their Hellenistic culture by defiling the temple in Jerusalem and banning Jewish practice. The Maccabees, led by five sons of the priest Matisiahu, especially Judah Maccabee, waged a three-year campaign that culminated in the cleansing and rededication of the temple. Today, this holiday reminds Jews to rededicate themselves to keeping alive the flame of Jewish religion, culture, and peoplehood, so that it may be passed on to future generations. When the Maccabees entered the temple and began to reclaim it from the Greeks, they immediately relit the eternal light, the Ne'er Tameet, which hangs in every synagogue. In the temple, they found a single jar of pure oil which had not been defiled by the Greeks, which was sufficient to light for only one day. The messenger that was sent to secure additional pure oil would take eight days to complete his mission, but miraculously, it burned for eight days. It's almost like having your phone at 2% when you wake up, no charger, and it lasts all day. Hanukkah means dedication. It's the festival that commemorates the purification and reunification of the temple. To this day, we use a special lamp called a menorah. There are eight nights of Hanukkah, we add each light, one light each night. There is a menorah in the capital. It's by the, it's in the rotunda. There's also a ninth branch called the shemash, which is the helper candle. The helper candle is the leader candle. We are all leaders. It is not just how we ourselves bring light. How can we help kindle the light in others, in terms of their commitment, the flame of justice, the glow of community across the entire state and beyond? The proper greeting for your Jewish friends is Happy Hanukkah. And on days where Jewish kids are hiding their identity out of fear, I urge you to join me at the menorah upon adjournment to light the candle and to, and to wish each other a Happy Hanukkah. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Lady has yielded the well. Representative Crowe, I think you have some visitors, and Chair Lady Mathiak have some visitors here from home as well, is that correct? Let's hear about them.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, we are very, very happy and honored to welcome an outstanding group of 10th graders here today. They are from Henry County and part of the youth leadership program. We're very excited to have them here visiting the Capitol today. I'm glad they got to come in and see some of the work being done here on the House floor. floor, and if you would just welcome them to the people's house, I would greatly appreciate it.
Welcome, our students. Good to have y'all. Oh, a big crowd. Thanks for traveling down.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We yielded well.
Representative Cannon. Oh, I'm sorry, the other Cannon. Excuse me. I do get y'all mixed up from time to time. I thought you went to maybe, I knew he went Army. I thought maybe you went to Navy. I didn't, no, you didn't. Okay. Representative Chaz Cannon, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to remind everyone of the little game this weekend up in New England, the one hundred and twenty-fourth playing of the Army-Navy game. So for all of you Navy squids out there, go Army, beat Navy.
Well, there is that for it. That's a pretty good little school. I enjoy that game. That has a Georgia Southern connection, doesn't it? It sure does. Coach Monken's up there. Representative Daniel is recognized for an afternoon order, and Baby Zane.
We're back. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, I wanted to do a morning order, but we got here a little later than planned, so an afternoon order is going to do. I rise today to first and foremost say thank you to Madam Pro Tem Jones and Speaker John Burns for the kindness that has been shown to me and the gracious support that I've received from both of them for the last two weeks as a new mother. As many of you have noticed, I've brought my son Zane with me every day over the past two weeks, but today I want to tell you why this means so much to me personally. At seventeen years old, as a junior in high school, found out I was pregnant, and as you can imagine, that brought a lot of uncertainty into my life. My son was born at the beginning of my senior year, and I was told by school administrators that I should no longer attend school in person because I would be a distraction. Even further, my counselor advised me that there was no point in applying to college because the likelihood was that I wouldn't graduate. You see, only fifty percent of teenage mothers graduate high school, much less college. I am part of, not only did I finish high school, but I'm also part of the two percent of teenage mothers who have gone on to earn a college degree before the age of thirty. And if earning a college degree is only at two percent, I have to imagine that I am likely the first teenage mother to ever be elected to the State House. We talk a lot up here about how representation matters, and I believe that to be true. I'm here today because the voters of the district that I represent believed that I would be the right person to come up here and fight for their families. And as a mother of four, that means the world to me. I hope as I stand here today and every day as the youngest female member of this body, that it shows any young girl in the state who may find herself pregnant that her life does not end when a new one begins. It is an honor of a lifetime to serve in my role as a legislator, but really, I'm just a mom, like so many others in the state, who care about the future that my children will inherit. Roughly twenty-four years ago, a former House member also brought her baby on this floor, and it's been said that at the time, the Democratic Speaker wasn't very kind or favorable to the idea. I'm really glad that times have changed. The truth is, regardless of the circumstances, both then and now, motherhood is the greatest gift that I've ever been given. So today, as the special session comes to an end, I just want to say thank you to Speaker Burns, Pro Tem Jones, and House leadership for showing me and the people of Georgia what it truly looks like to be pro-women and pro-family, and I look forward to seeing y'all back here in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I can tell you all that Baby Zane is much more responsible and behaved than members of this body. I've been, I've been watching. I've been watching. He's ideal child. I hope he maintains that. He'll make a great member one day, Representative Daniel. Thank you, and we appreciate your journey and appreciate you, what you've accomplished and what you will accomplish. All right, we have to even the score here now. I didn't do a very good job a while ago on reading my notes, so I think a friend of mine's here. I had some Navy people in my family, and we have a Navy member of this House, Representative Jackson. Can speak to it. Let's hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I understand that my good friend on the other side of the aisle just talked about Army beating Navy. But in the words of Jay-Z, "Men lie, women lie, numbers don't lie." The last eighteen years, Mr. Speaker, the last eighteen years, Navy has defeated Army fourteen times. Need I say, "Go Navy."
Well, there, Representative Chaz Cannon, I didn't see you mash your button, but anyway, go Army. So we're going to get a little more serious just for a moment here, y'all, and I want to recognize Representative Kendrick and the Gwinnett delegation. You have the members, Representative Kendrick, hold one second. If members will stand.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This past week, we lost a champion in a trail plazer in Gwinnett County, Mr. Thomas Livesey. He lived in Centerville, which is in Gwinnett County, the district that I represent, and he will be greatly missed, and I want to read a little bit about his life and legacy. He was born and raised in a historic town called the Promised Land. Thomas Livesey started his journey in nineteen thirty. One of thirteen brothers and sisters, this Livesey family pioneer blazed a path for generations to follow. From fighting on the front lines in the Korean War to living in Chicago and raising five children, five grandchildren, and nine great-grandchildren, Thomas was a leader wherever he was stationed. He answered the call when his father passed and moved back home, and with the help of his family, he managed the one hundred and ten acres that his parents purchased in nineteen twenty. He led the revitalization of the Promised Land in the seventies, establishing a grocery store, gas station, restaurant, laundry mat, barber shop, and beauty salon, and car wash. He was known as the unofficial mayor of the Promised Land. Thomas Livesey has a legacy that will continue to live on throughout his ninety-three years of service to his family, his friends, and his county. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask for a moment of silence for him and our community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Representative. Members, if I can have your attention just for a moment longer, just for a moment longer, we have two important announcements that we need to make, an announcement and a couple of recognitions, but first, Mr. Clerk. Clerk, we'll read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions, please.
Honoring the life and memory of Thomas Livesey. Honoring the life and memory of Betty Camp Godwin. Recognizing and commending Reverend Dr. Joseph Williams on the occasion of his twenty-fifth pastoral anniversary. Commending and congratulating Dr. A. DeMoin Kinney. Recognizing and commending the Georgia Haitian-American Chamber of Commerce. Commending and celebrating the city of Decatur on its bicentennial. Recognizing and commending Steve Horton on his outstanding public service as the mayor of Covington and for other purposes. That completes the reading of privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? Chair has none. The resolutions are adopted. Chairman Billy Mitchell, we have an announcement. You want to make it at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If we could have the Democratic Caucus fifteen minutes after adjournment meet on the South Wing steps for a photo. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Wanted to make sure we got that in, and now we do have one afternoon order that I'm going to inject back in. I think it's important to this membership, Representative Jackson from down in Savannah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is sadly that I announced to you of the passing of the person that I replaced, Mickey Stevens' daughter has passed, and I ask that you pray for his family as they move forward to prepare for the funeral. Thank you for allowing me this.
Prayers for the family. We all have great memories, many of, all of us that do represent Stevens. He was a good friend of mine, I can tell you that, and a great leader in our state, so we certainly remember his family. We have a couple of, I guess, Leader Fstration, this is not a motion, is it? Not a motion. We're almost there. Leader Fstration is recognized to give us some information.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I want to thank all of the staff. We have such incredible staff that allows it to be possible for us to be here at the Capitol during special session, and so just across the Capitol complex, want to thank them for all their hard work. But also want to point out, these are very important special days as well to two of our dear friends and staff who work very close with us here in the House. So Terry England, who is Chief of Staff to the Speaker, our former colleague, is Chairman of the Appropriations Committee. This is a very important day in his life, and Cindy England, who many of you know, his wonderful wife, and he went on their first date forty-five years ago today, and Cindy England is such a wonderful friend and individual, and I think, Mr. Chairman, it's fair to say you married way, way up. Is that right?
She still regrets it.
Congratulations to the Englands. And also, I wanted to point out today, Caitlin Dussler, who is Executive Secretary to the Speaker, it is her birthday, and I know all of us are very grateful for Caitlin's hard work and help to each and every member of the House. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. She says she's twenty-nine. I don't know how many years she's been twenty-nine, but that's what she says. Happy birthday. I want to follow up on it real quickly with you. One of y'all over there, see if we can get Ms. Holland to step into the chamber, please. I want to thank a couple of people, and I know that all the members of this House, I think you would agree with me, that the lady that heads up our reapportionment office for the House and Senate, Gina Wright, has always and has done yeoman's work in helping us put these maps together and exercising many different options, and we know you've had many, many sleepless nights and long days in the last few weeks, so we just want to thank you and your staff for everything you've done for us, Gina. Well, I just want to make sure we all know whom she is. She does great work for us in this special session and doing our session, is Angela Holland, who represents the convenience stores, but takes care of us in the anteroom and so many more things. And guess what, members? What you've done for Angela that she's so proud of, she has a sink in the anteroom, so that's a great change. Thanks to the building authority for taking care of that. Our doorkeepers, we can't do this without you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Corey, to you and your staff, thank you, and please express our gratitude to them for what they do for us. Ben, man, you've taken a lot of pictures. I know your finger's got to be hurting, but also stuff. And to all of you, thank you for leaving your families, leaving the comfort of your home and being here and taking care of the people's business. So with that, before I recognize the Majority Leader, where is my dear friend from South Georgia? Got a special treat. Well, I can tell you, well, I'll let him announce himself and do it himself. Dexter.
All right. Thank you, Speaker. Since we were in session and we have a tough session, I think we need to really leave in some great joy with each other, so we're just going to do a little bit of "We wish you a Merry Christmas" together, okay? Y'all ready? We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank y'all.
Representative Sharper, that's awesome. I almost ruined it. I almost left the microphone on when I sang very low. That would have not been a good time. So with that, I think the business of this special session is about ready to conclude, and look forward to seeing you all on January the eighth, twenty twenty-four. So thank you again for your work this year. We have, I know some things to do before the end of the year, so I wish you all a Merry Christmas, to you and your families, and a safe, joyful December, and look forward, and a great New Year, and be safe, and look forward to seeing you. If I or any of my team can be of help to you over this interim till we come back, I can assure you, your call will be welcome, and we will be glad to talk to you. So let me know if we can help in any way. Be safe. Mr. Leader, Leader of this House, Leader Fstration is recognized for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this House adjourn. Signee die.
On the motion of the Majority Leader of this House, Leader Fstration, this House is adjourned. Signee die.